Morning. It's a great day and a great room. Again, I'd like to thank the support system, our IT folks for doing a very aggressive and productive transformation from one of Philadelphia's most noteworthy courtrooms into the council chambers for today. Thank you all so much for your great work, guys. We really appreciate it. We have a quorum and ask all guests and visitors of Retire Behind the Rail, and at this time, we will start our council session. To give an invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Alex Valasquez of Oasis City Church. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Good morning. I am not sure if we should take this opportunity to pray for the Flyers while we're here, and also for the Philadelphia Phillies, but if you can bow your heads for me. Father, we thank you this morning for giving us just this great day. We pray this morning that you may give us the wisdom that is needed to tackle the difficult and just the challenging situations that we face every day in this city. Give every person, Lord God, the patience that they need, Lord God, the strength that they need, and the wisdom that you gave Solomon, so that we can continue bearing the people of this great city. We love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Counsel, be at ease. Again, thank you very much, Pastor. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 19, 2015, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 19, 2015, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 19, 2015 stand approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no requests for leave or absence on a party of majority.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I will dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. We really appreciate the fact that you are engaged in participating in this wonderful process that the Constitution and the city charter gives us. We hope that you enjoy yourself so much today that you actually come back again. So again, thank you all, and continue to be a part of our wonderful government. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution honoring Philadelphia's living legends. Would all those living legends please join the Councilmen at the podium? And joining the Councilmen, we have Councilman Good, Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilman Nielsen, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman O., Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilman Heenan. Senator, how are you? I know.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Today, we recognize living legends. As a result of the National African-American History Month, which has its origins in 1915 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who said that if a race has no history, it has no worthy traditions; it becomes a negligible factor in the thought of the world and stands in danger of being We could have stopped there and just recognized names from the past, but on Germantown Avenue in Councilwoman Bass's district, there is a mural, and it had a face on the wall, and there were some young people that were walking down the street. And I asked them, "Tell me who that is on the mural." One was David P. Richardson. The other was Georgie Woods. And none of them, Cody, had an idea who they were. And so we said that we need to recognize people constantly, not just the ones who have come before, but the ones who are here right now, making a difference. Whether we talk about legends like Lucien B. Blackwell or Vernon Marks in North Philadelphia, who made a difference by sitting on his step-by and doing his thing and providing poor people with housing, these people weren't on murals. They weren't on... I actually brought the picture, and every time on my desk, Councilman Greenlee, I can tell the age of a person I'm talking to, because they won't know who these people are. That's actually Milton Street with them when he had hair. So, we're here today to recognize some people that are doing their thing to make a difference today. Whether you talk about Vi Sekahama with his children's adoption program, making a difference, or you talk about at the other end of the spectrum, Geneva Black, who has made the fourth quarter of life, senior's life, look sexy. So here we are, honoring the Philadelphia living legends, Geneva Black, Senator Shirley M. Kitchen, Cody Anderson, Vernon Odom, Fire Commissioner Lloyd Ayers, Vi Sekahama, Bobby Williams, in the areas of government, public safety, social justice, civil rights, labor relations, journalism, community activism, business leadership. And we are also taking the opportunity to recognize a young whippersnapper, who won't be on a mural for quite some time, but has made a significant difference. He picks winners. He started out with Seth Williams for DA. He went with Obama against the tide back then, got it right, went with Michael Nutter for mayor, went with a guy by the name of Otterado, out in the western end of Pennsylvania, and then, the surprise of the decade, a guy by the name of Tom Wolf. So we're recognizing him as well. Whereas...
Thank you. Geneva A. Black has dedicated her life and service for more than 45 years to providing quality, compassionate, in-home, and center-based care for elderly and vulnerable residents in West Philadelphia and beyond. In 1970, Ms. Black joined the Hattington Leadership Organization as a housing coordinator, and two years later became its executive director. Since that time, the organization was renamed Hattington Multi-Services for Older Adults, Inc., and has more than quadrupled its staff, services, and positive impact in the community. And whereas the Honorable Shirley M. Kitchen has a vast history of political service and community advocacy dating back to 1970, when she was a poll worker, to her days as a constituent service representative at Philadelphia City Hall, to her leadership as a state representative, and her current role in the Pennsylvania State Senate since 1997. Senator Kitchen's leadership has been celebrated with numerous awards, including the Philadelphia Tribune's Most Influential African-American Leader, the Dawn Staley Foundation Government Service Award, the Warren E. Smith Corporate Woman of the Year Award, and the Distinguished Service Community Impact Award from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, among many others. And...
Whereas Cody Anderson launched his distinguished career in radio as Vice President and General Manager of WDAS Radio in Philadelphia. He continued on to purchase and operate WHAT Radio and open a family-operated public relations firm while also working with Dr. and Mrs. Walter Lomax to make 900 AM WURD Radio accessible to the Philadelphia African-American community. Mr. Anderson worked tirelessly with area prisons, speaking with inmates and giving them a chance to tell their stories, exemplary of his belief that everybody deserves to be heard. Mr. Anderson is also committed to service beyond the borders of Philadelphia, with philanthropic contributions to Hurricane Katrina victims and vulnerable groups in Senegal, Africa, where he was recognized as honorary chief. And...
Whereas Vernon Odom, anchor with Action News Team, comes from a strong family history of journalists. His maternal grandfather, B.T. Harvey Senior, was the second African-American to publish a daily newspaper. Vernon Odom has been with WPVI-TV 6 ABC in Philadelphia for more than 35 years. His repertorial experience dates back to the Martin Luther King assassination when he was a radio reporter in Atlanta. He has covered various phases of the civil rights movement in the deep south and early political campaigns for national leaders such as former President Jimmy Carter, Andrew Young, Julian Bond, and Maynard Jackson. In November 2004, Mr. Odom was inducted into the Broadcast Pioneers Hall of Fame.
Whereas Lloyd Ayers began his career with the Philadelphia Fire Department in 1974 and devoted 31 years to public service with the Philadelphia Fire Department, serving in every rank in the department from lieutenant to deputy commissioner. Then Lloyd Ayers was sworn in as Philadelphia's Fire Commissioner on Wednesday, December 1, 2004. As Fire Commissioner, he managed the 2,400-member uniform force and all operations of the Philadelphia Fire Department, which comprised of the fifth-largest fire department in the United States. Commissioner Ayers retired from the Philadelphia Fire Department on June 13, 2014, ending four decades of remarkable service.
Whereas Vi Sekahama celebrated a lengthy professional football career in the NFL from 1986 to 1993, when he retired from professional football and the Philadelphia Eagles. Vi then launched his career as a sports announcer in 1994, and with then CBS owned and operated television station WCAU in Philadelphia, working as a spokesperson for weekend sporting events. After the station was sold to NBC, Vi has moved on to do weekday sports announcing and currently serves as the station's sports director.
Whereas Bobby J. Williams is a tireless community advocate who has dedicated the past 62 years of his life to struggling residents in a nice town, Tioga neighborhood. Williams began his community activism as a coordinator in the NAACP, first under the Philadelphia Chapter President A. Leon Higabottom, then throughout the tenure of Cecil B. Moore. Williams also founded several community organizations and became a member of countless more, all while working his way up the ladder at a men's suits warehouse and running his own dry cleaning service. Today, Williams can be found still giving back to the community in a variety of roles with nonprofit organizations throughout Philadelphia.
Whereas Oprah S. Canolito IV was born and raised in Philadelphia. A graduate of Roman Catholic High School, he obtained a Bachelor of Arts in Education from Florida Agriculture and Mechanic University in 2002. Before joining the Wolf Four Governor campaign, Oprah worked in the Philadelphia Mayor Michael Nutter's administration as Deputy of Legislative Affairs, helping to coordinate the city's actual value initiative, AVI. In 2012, Oprah was part of the presidential reelection of Obama, and as a Pennsylvania Southeast Political Director, Oprah previously served as the Director of both Mayor Nutter's 2011 reelection bid and District Attorney Seth Williams' race in 2009. Oprah currently holds the position of Deputy Chief of Staff for Governor Tom Wolf. Before serving in his current position, Oprah played a key role on the Wolf campaign as a senior advisor... It's hard to call him senior anything, but senior advisor for the Wolf transition team, and also as deputy campaign manager and political director. Oprah's appointment as Deputy Chief of Staff of the governor makes him the youngest African-American to hold such a position in a governor's cabinet. That deserves a clap. Be it resolved by counsel of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and celebrate Philadelphia's living legends, Geneva Black, Senator Shirley M. Kitchen, Cody Anderson, Vernon Odom, Fire Commissioner Lloyd Ayers, Vi Sekahama, and Bobby Williams, in the areas of government, public safety, social justice, civil rights, labor relations, journalism, community activism, and business leadership in Philadelphia. Also recognizing Oprah Canolito IV as up-and-coming living legend, all parts of the Black History Month. Further be it resolved that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to the Philadelphia living legends as evidence of this administration's sincerity of this legislative body. Thank you.
Awesome. Sure. Now, hold on. The Chair recognizes Senator Shirley Kitchen for remarks. That's right, Senator. You know what it's like.
Oh, you won, my brother.
I know.
I knew you had something up your sleeve, though. I really did. This is just a wonderful show of support for us and the encouragement, and I know that my fellow recipients feel like I do. The only thing missing today is the people that was on that journey with us, that helped us to accomplish so many of the things. So it's good to give people their roses while we could smell them. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate that. President Clark, all of you here, I want to thank my NBC 10 team, my morning team, Chris and Bill and Tracy and my colleagues, our NBC 10 alums who are here. Appreciate that you guys came out, members of my faith. All of you, thank you very much, Councilman Jones, for submitting my name. This is quite an honor. I don't want to leave out my wife. She... Every person here could probably appreciate this. Behind every successful man is a shocked mother-in-law. And I appreciate that her parents had faith that I could take care of their daughter. Thank you very much, Council President and Council. Thank you for this honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, man. Counsel, be at ease. Good question. Where you are? Yeah, I think we're a little space-challenged.
So if you'll take out your... Yeah, you're going to go up against the rail?
He's directing us over.
And every night is Friday night.
How you doing? How you doing, Bass?
Good.
What's up, man?
No, man.
Maybe he didn't like the half-body shot?
Sometimes we do a half-body shot, but the shot at the other spot was just standing up here.
And on the count of three, when you have everyone facing forward or facing towards me, you say, "All right, one, two, three." I'll take one more. One, two, three.
Everybody else, jump up, please.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you all very much.
You may do.
Thank you all very much. And again, congratulations to our living ledgers and the youngest member of the group, soon to be a living legend. Next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 140906, 140007, 140012, 140050, 150056, and 150091. And I am pleased to advise you that on February 25, 2015, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on February 12, 2015, Bill Number 150010, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 2305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Office of Property Assessment: Chief Assessment Officer Powers and Duties by modifying the documentation requirements for real estate tax exemptions.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 51st and 50th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 11th Street, Susquehanna Street, 10th Street, and Diamond Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-stopping regulation on the 7,400 block of Henslow Place.
That bill will also be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 7th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution declaring March 2 to March 8, 2015, is Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and acknowledging the Greater Delaware Valley Chapter of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society for their work to improve the lives of Philadelphians living with MS.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution supporting House Bill Number 229, which creates a punishable offense for the cyber harassment of a child in Pennsylvania to raise awareness of the need for accountability to cyberbullying in Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Counselman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and commending Fair Trade Philadelphia for its commitment to economic equality for workers and sustainable production practices for the environment.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Candace B. Mitchell, co-founder and CEO of Myvana in the 4th Councilmatic District, for her entrepreneurial skills, ingenuity, and her contributions to the community and economy of Philadelphia as an innovative woman, business owner, as we further recognize March as Women's History Month.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman.
Whereas Bobby J. Williams is a tireless community advocate who has dedicated the past 62 years of his life to struggling residents in a nice town, Tioga neighborhood. Williams began his community activism as a coordinator in the NAACP, first under the Philadelphia Chapter President A. Leon Higabottom, then throughout the tenure of Cecil B. Moore. Williams also founded several community organizations and became a member of countless more, all while working his way up the ladder at a men's suits warehouse and running his own dry cleaning service. Today, Williams can be found still giving back to the community in a variety of roles with nonprofit organizations throughout Philadelphia.
Whereas Oprah S. Canolito IV was born and raised in Philadelphia. A graduate of Roman Catholic High School, he obtained a Bachelor of Arts in Education from Florida Agriculture and Mechanic University in 2002. Before joining the Wolf Four Governor campaign, Oprah worked in the Philadelphia Mayor Michael Nutter's administration as Deputy of Legislative Affairs, helping to coordinate the city's actual value initiative, AVI. In 2012, Oprah was part of the presidential reelection of Obama, and as a Pennsylvania Southeast Political Director, Oprah previously served as the Director of both Mayor Nutter's 2011 reelection bid and District Attorney Seth Williams' race in 2009. Oprah currently holds the position of Deputy Chief of Staff for Governor Tom Wolf. Before serving in his current position, Oprah played a key role on the Wolf campaign as a senior advisor... It's hard to call him senior or anything, but senior advisor for the Wolf transition team, and also as deputy campaign manager and political director. Oprah's appointment as Deputy Chief of Staff of the governor makes him the youngest African-American to hold such a position in a governor's cabinet. That deserves a clap. Be it resolved by counsel of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and celebrate Philadelphia's living legends, Geneva Black, Senator Shirley M. Kitchen, Cody Anderson, Vernon Odom, Fire Commissioner Lloyd Ayers, Vi Sekahama, and Bobby Williams, in the areas of government, public safety, social justice, civil rights, labor relations, journalism, community activism, and business leadership in Philadelphia. Also recognizing Oprah Canolito IV as up-and-coming living legend, all parts of the Black History Month. Further be it resolved that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to the Philadelphia living legends as evidence of this administration's sincerity of this legislative body. Thank you.
Awesome. Sure. Now, hold on. The Chair recognizes Senator Shirley Kitchen for remarks. That's right, Senator. You know what it's like.
I owe you one, my brother.
I know.
I knew you had something up your sleeve, though. I really did. This is just a wonderful show of support for us and the encouragement, and I know that my fellow recipients feel like I do. The only thing missing today is the people that was on that journey with us, that helped us to accomplish so many of the things. So it's good to give people their roses while we could smell them. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate that. President Clark, all of you here, I want to thank my NBC 10 team, my morning team, Chris and Bill and Tracy and my colleagues, our NBC 10 alums who are here. Appreciate that you guys came out, members of my faith. All of you, thank you very much, Councilman Jones, for submitting my name. This is quite an honor. I don't want to leave out my wife. She... Every person here could probably appreciate this. Behind every successful man is a shocked mother-in-law. And I appreciate that her parents had faith that I could take care of their daughter. Thank you very much, Council President and Council. Thank you for this honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, man. Counsel, be at ease. Good question. Where you are? Yeah, I think we're a little space-challenged.
So if you'll take out your... Yeah, you're going to go up against the rail?
He's directing us over.
Oh. Okay. There you go. How you doing? How you doing, Bass? Good. Good. What's up, man? No, man. Great, great. Great.
Maybe he didn't like the half-body shot?
Sometimes we do a half-body shot, but the shot at the other spot was just standing up here.
Maybe he didn't like the half-body shot?
Sometimes we do a half-body shot, but the shot at the other spot was just standing up here.
On the count of three, when you have everyone facing forward or facing towards me, you say, "All right, one, two, three." I'll take one more. One, two, three. Okay? Everybody else, jump up, please. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you all very much. You may do.
Maybe he didn't like the half-body shot?
Sometimes we do a half-body shot, but the shot at the other spot was just standing up here.
On the count of three, when you have everyone facing forward or facing towards me, you say, "All right, one, two, three." I'll take one more. One, two, three. Okay? Everybody else, jump up, please. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you all very much. And again, congratulations to our living ledgers and the youngest member of the group, soon to be a living legend.
Next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 140906, 140007, 140012, 140050, 150056, and 150091. And I am pleased to advise you that on February 25, 2015, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on February 12, 2015, Bill Number 150010, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 2605 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income Receives Taxes to add a new subsection, job training sponsorship credit, providing a credit for certain contributions.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-stopping regulation on the 7,400 block of Henslow Place.
That bill will also be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 7th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution declaring March 2 to March 8, 2015, is Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and acknowledging the Greater Delaware Valley Chapter of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society for their work to improve the lives of Philadelphians living with MS.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Squillaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill today.
Thank you, Counselman.
An ordinance amending Section 9204 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Center City by eliminating previously designated vendor locations in Center City.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman O.[1577.12]
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled as sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 7th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution declaring March 2nd to March 8th, 2015, is Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in Philadelphia and acknowledging the Greater Delaware Valley chapter of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society for their work to improve the lives of Philadelphians living with MS.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution supporting House Bill Number 229, which creates a punishable offense for the cyber harassment of a child in Pennsylvania to raise awareness of the need for accountability to cyberbullying in Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and commending fair trade Philadelphia for its commitment to economic equality for workers and sustainable production practices for the environment.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Candace B. Mitchell, co-founder and CEO of Myvana in the 4th Councilmatic District for her entrepreneurial skills, ingenuity, and her contributions to the community and economy of Philadelphia as an innovative woman, business owner, as we further recognize March as Women's History Month.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending section 9204 of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk vendors in Center City by eliminating previously designated vendor locations in Center City.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending title 2 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City County Consolidation, Chapter 2300, entitled Property Assessment, Section 2305, entitled Officer of Property Assessment Chief Assessment Officer Powers and Duties, by setting the deadline to apply for the exemption authorized by this section to be June 1, 2015, for tax year 2016.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and at this time, we will have reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee of Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, which is referred to bill number 140906, entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Zoning and Planning, to add a new section 14516, entitled UED Urban Experiential Display Overlay Control District, and bill number 140936, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Market Street, 48th Street, Havreford Avenue, and 46th Street, and bill number 141031, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Sixth Street, Wood Street, Second Street, Benjamin Franklin Bridge Access Road, and Vine Street Expressway Ramp, and bill number 15007, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Front Street, Oxford Street, Frankfurt Avenue, Norris Street, Aramango Avenue, Fletcher Street, Moyer Street, Burke Street, Girard Avenue, Columbia Avenue, Beach Street, Delaware Avenue, Frankfurt Avenue, and Girard Avenue, and bill number 150050, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Montrose Street, 17th Street, Carpenter Street, and 18th Street. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 140936, 141031, 150007, and 150050.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 140936, 141031, 150007, and 150050. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Bill number 140906 will be placed on the first reading calendar for the next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown will report from the Committee on the Environment.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on the Environment reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on the Environment, which is referred to bill number 150011, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 93402 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Benchmarking Energy and Water Use, to expand the buildings for which the benchmarking and reporting of energy and water usage data is required. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 150011.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on the committee. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that those bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar on our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers 150025, 150126, 150127, 150128, 150130, 150133, 150134, 140244, 140764, 150017, 140230, 140747, 15005, 140944, and 15008. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you very much. Before considering these bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you have not already signed up to testify on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, I would ask that you sign up at the table in the rear. There you go. All right. Your name will be called. Once your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify on the bill or resolution. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Michael Rolls. Michael Rolls. Justin Haley. Commenting on 150133.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Justin Haley. I'm a member of Unite Here 634. I've been a student safety staff for moderation over for five years now. Located at 59th and on Baltimore Avenue. I follow student safety staff. Adults are charged with keeping order, looking after, and ensuring the safety of the students we serve. We do this and much more. We look out for bullying and emotional stress students. We lend an ear and a trusting adult to talk to. We often called, we are often called the second moms and dads of the schools. We do all this while watching over hundreds of kids at one time. We thank you for passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, sir.
Nicole Hunt. Commenting on 150133.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nicole Hunt. I'm a food service worker for the school district of Philadelphia, and I'm a representative of Unite Here Local 634. My coworkers and I feed thousands of children across the city every day. For many of them, we provide their only reliable meal. We offer love and take enormous pride in what we do. We hope to get this matter resolved as soon as possible. In spite of the current situation, the members remain committed to the students, their safety, and care is our number one priority. The students are like our children, so ought to be ours is the labor of love. Please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Donna Cooper. Commenting on 15005.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President. Sharon and I are both testified. Could she go first and then I go second? We're both on the list.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Reverend Sharon Easterling. I'm the executive director of the Delaware Valley Association for the Education of Young Children. We're the professional association of early childhood practitioners, and we're on a mission to make every early childhood program in the city high quality so that all children have the opportunity to achieve their God-given potential. As I speak to you this morning, I'm fully aware of the myriad of pressing issues facing the city of Philadelphia. They're all clamoring for your attention, and each is asserting priority status. So when I tell you that ensuring a high-quality preschool experience for every young child in Philadelphia is the single most important thing we can do to address the vexing problems of multigenerational poverty, education funding, student outcomes, crime, and the escalating cost of incarceration, a skilled workforce, an insufficient tax base, and the runaway cost of chronic health problems, I'm pretty sure you'll be skeptical. But more than 40 years of research bears out these benefits. Consider this one fact. If I told you that we have the ability to reduce the number of children in each grade in the school district of Philadelphia who need special education from 1,500 students down to below 500, saving $5 million per class for a total of $60 million in savings in that one area, I think you would be impressed. Well, that's exactly what the evaluation of pre-K counts in Philadelphia demonstrates. Reduction of special ed from 14% down to 4%. Unfortunately, despite the proven benefits of high-quality early childhood education, the state only funds a fraction of eligible children, and the city has even less skin in the game. But the benefits of universal pre-K is only part of the story. There's another fact that we ignore at our own peril, because the majority of our young children in the city are in childcare programs that are substandard because of chronic underfunding. We can ignore this silent crisis today, but ultimately will pay the price when these children grow up and their challenges become more costly to remediate. So if we know that universal high-quality pre-K has such a great return on investment, and less than a third of our children are getting these services, and the remainder of children are in poor to mediocre quality, what do we need to do to move forward? What we need is a plan to fund universal pre-K in Philadelphia. We need a plan that is embraced and owned by the leaders of the city, and we need to build public will to support that plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm Donna Cooper. I'm the executive director of Public Citizens for Children and Youth, and I'm here today to thank Councilwoman Blackwell, the chair of the Education Committee, for managing a process to bring together this terrific resolution to put a pre-K measure on the ballot, and to also thank her colleague, Laondell Reynolds Brown, for making sure this happened, and ultimately, Council President Clark, to thank you for putting this on the docket today. I know that, and we all know, it's a very crowded ballot. We know that we should take our charter very seriously. It is a sacred document. But I also know that the vote today to put this measure on the ballot is about the future of our city. I cannot emphasize more strongly that a vote to put this on the ballot will change the trajectory of our city. I want to thank you for a yes vote on this measure because you will be voting to reduce child poverty. I want to thank you for a yes vote on this measure because you will be voting for our children to start school ready for school success. I want to thank you for a yes vote on this measure because you will be making sure more of our children graduate high school, go to college, and graduate college. I want to thank you for a yes vote on this measure because you will be decreasing the number of children who are arrested and incarcerated. And finally, I want to thank you for voting yes on this measure because you will be voting for the prosperity, the vibrancy, and the competitiveness of our city. And I want to invite my friends who helped us collect these 4,000 petitions that we're bringing into council right now that recognize your courage to put this on the ballot, and your belief that the voters will say yes, and your willingness to vote today to help the dreams of our children come true. And if you'll just stand, the few of us are in the room today, could each stand up, and Sean, and Sharon for helping get these petitions. Thank you very much, City Council of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. There being no additional speeches, we will move on to our calendar. Mr. Decker, could you please read the title of 150025?
A resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on income inequality in the city of Philadelphia to identify trends, impacts, and opportunities associated with income inequality in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, put a motion to approve the resolution, please.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150025 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150126.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and or renewal of a portion of Belmont, number 2 or renewal area identified by house number and street address as 4050 through 66 Havreford Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. 150126 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150127.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled as sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 43rd ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150127 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150128.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and or renewal of a portion of the model city's urban area identified by house number and street address as 1925 West Wilt Street.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150128 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150130.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled as sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 18th, 19th, and 37th wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
I move for the adoption.
Second.
Been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150130 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150133.
A resolution urging the school district of Philadelphia and the School Reform Commission to return to the bargaining table with Unite Here Local 634.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
Been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution 150133 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150134.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled as sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 31st ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150134 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140244. I will note that this requires a two-thirds vote. It is a charter change.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of a commission for women.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Can you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Jones? Councilman Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien? Councilman O'Neil? Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gornan Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. I'm going for the, uh, Councilman Jones and Councilman Johnson. Ayes are 16, and ayes are 0. The resolution is 140244 is approved. Mr. Decker, 140764.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter to provide for the adoption of language access plans by all city agencies.
Again, I note that this is a resolution proposing an amendment to the Home World Charter. It requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Decker, will you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gornan Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are 16, and ayes are 0. Resolution 140764 is approved. Mr. Decker, 150017.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of a commission on universal pre-kindergarten.
Again, this is a resolution proposing an amendment to the Home World Charter, requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gornan Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 16, and ayes are 0. Resolution 150017 is passed. Mr. Decker called the, please, 140230.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment
The ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140747.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of an independent commission on universal pre-kindergarten.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenly?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kurnana Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 15005.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code by amending Section A 907 entitled zoning fees by revising certain zoning fees for family and group daycares.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenly?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kurnana Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140944.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code by amending Section A 907 entitled zoning fees by revising certain zoning fees for family and group daycares.
Now, this bill has been read on two separate days. Councilwoman, you wanted to speak on the prior bill?
No.
Let me, or this one? Okay. We'll suspend that vote and, Mr. Decker, is that okay? All right, okay. Mr. Decker says it's okay. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be very, very remiss because I think it's important that the record reflects when members of council from different persuasions and other ways come together in a magnificent way around an issue that binds us and when it comes to quality childcare and trying to find ways to minimize and/or eliminate barriers, we should do that. So I want to salute Councilman Brian O'Neal on this measure. The first bill I passed in city council now 14 years ago was about childcare and here we are 14 years later singing basically from the same sheet of music. So I wanted to salute him and thank him for working with me and actually urging me to act and move on this measure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, can you read the title again, please?
Bill Number 140944 entitled an ordinance amending Subcode A of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code by amending Section A 907 entitled zoning fees by revising certain zoning fees for family and group daycares.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenly?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kurnana Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 15008.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code as it has been amended by Bill Number 140856 by amending Chapter Nine entitled fees by revising the fees for licenses issued under Chapter Nine 3900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled property licenses and owner accountability.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Good?
Aye.
Councilman Greenly?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilman O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kurnana Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tasco?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution declaring March 2nd to March 8th, 2015 is Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in Philadelphia and acknowledging the Greater Delaware Valley chapter of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society for their work to improve the lives of Philadelphians living with MS. Introduced by Councilman Nielsen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that will be approved.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is approved.
And a resolution recognizing and commending Fair Trade Philadelphia for its commitment to economic equality for workers and sustainable production practices for the environment. Introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown on behalf and Council President Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Candace V. Mitchell, co-founder and CEO of Myavana in the Fourth Councilmatic District, Councilmatic District, for her entrepreneurial skills, ingenuity, and her contributions to the community and economy of Philadelphia as an innovative woman, business owner, as we further recognize March as Women's History Month. Introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And again, I ask you all to raise your hands because if we do not have the screen. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to alert the public, as I know Councilwoman Blackwell has as well, that since there has been a law change regarding tax-exempt properties, that there is now a requirement that documentation be filed to ensure that nonprofit organizations are using the property fully in a nonprofit manner. Unfortunately, what has happened is the Office of Property Assessment, which had dated letters January 21st, did not send out the letters till February 13th, and many organizations are receiving those packages or those letters now, and they are alarmed to find a deadline of March 31st for tax year 2016. The requirements are burdensome. A copy of the organization's Articles of Incorporation, a copy of the organization's Internal Revenue Service Letter of Determination for 501(c)(3) recognition, a copy of the organization's charter and bylaws, including all amendments, a copy of the most recent income and expense statement, a copy of the organization's current statement of assets and liabilities, a copy of the organization's most recently filed IRS Form 990, a statement of all fundraising activities conducted by the organization, a copy of the leases entered into the organization for space at the subject property, and a copy of the recorded deed for the subject property. Failure to comply with documentation requirements will slow the processing, but failure to meet the March 31st deadline will have serious consequences for tax-exempt entities because they will lose their tax exemption and become fully taxable for the year 2016 and future years going forward. Small churches, volunteer organization, ethnic groups, which have nonprofits and they may not speak English, are at this time, many of them unaware that there is a new requirement, that there are forms to be filled out, documentation to substantiate, and a deadline of March 31st. I was at a meeting last night of a veterans organization, and as I walked in, they were talking about this very issue, that, you know, they don't have regular meetings, they don't have full-time officers, they just got the letter, and they are now just aware that they are looking at this big tax issue. And so it is important that the Office of OPA provide a new deadline, and what I have done is to introduce a bill to set the, to extend the deadline to June 1st, adding another 62 days. The important issue here is that we fast-track this and we let organizations know, one is they have this law, second is that they have to comply with it, and I know that there are other issues that are going on, but at least in terms of the many organizations that are reaching out, I think, to all of us, that we are extending the deadline, at least if the bill passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasco.
Mr. President, I will be sending around today to my colleagues a press release from the Business Wire to show that UIL was bought by Abirajola, a USA company, a foreign company operating in the United States. My only question today is, what did UIL know and when did they know it? Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman, that saying sounds familiar. What, UIL is, what is that?
UIL.
Sounds familiar. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to concur with the statement by my colleague Councilman David O regarding the Office of Property Assessment and a requirement for nonprofit organizations to file their tax-exempt status by March 31st. I have been in contact with members of several churches, including the President of the Black Clergy of Philadelphia, who also reached out to Councilwoman Janie Blackwell regarding this issue. We know that churches are traditionally tax-exempt, and if this measure moves forward, as is, without the churches being notified about the actual deadline, it can have a significant and dire impact on their overall operations. And so I wholeheartedly support Councilman O's legislation. We will be vocal as we move forward to make sure those who are doing a good work in the nonprofit area aren't penalized based upon legislation, based upon a policy that came out of the Office of Property Assessment. Also, Mr. President, today I introduced legislation that provides a dollar-for-dollar tax credit to businesses which contribute to job training programs here in the City of Philadelphia. This bill will make skilled labor positions more available by encouraging businesses to invest in low-cost skilled certifications programs. It will employ folks with higher-paying jobs, increase our tax base, and is the exact type of investment government should be making in our workforce. Generosity.com, economist and Urban Affairs Coalition Manager of Partnerships and Outreach, and a constituent of mine, Tavani DeVore, made a compelling argument to connect tax credits to job training, which was found in the Philadelphia Business Journal article, Generosity: Why Philadelphia Should Invest in Skilled Labor Development. This article was the impetus for the program. And so as we move forward, and I know we have the Democratic National Convention coming here to the City of Philadelphia, we also have the Pope coming here to the City of Philadelphia, but also as we focus on closing the gap between the rich and the poor, we continue to have an agenda of helping people get jobs, most importantly, a skilled workforce. And so I just want to make that known to the public. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I certainly thank my colleagues for all they've said about this issue of the Office of Property Assessment. The bill I introduced, the difference between mine and Councilman O's is that he postpones it till June, and mine takes that section of the bill out, so that it will be as it has been before this bill was introduced. As was said, I did talk to the head of the Black Clergy, Pastor Terrence Griffith. I've talked to many ministers in my area. I've talked to my own church, Sharon Baptist Church, and in fact, on my way here, upstairs, I ran into a couple women who were here just for this issue from the church. So certainly for all those who are representing churches around the city, we thank them for coming, and we ask that they will come back when we have a public hearing to express their concerns. It is, I've talked to so many churches from metropolitan and many other churches who are very, very upset. Some churches received notification that they're supposed to file all these forms already referenced by Councilman O, and some did not. Some churches received them themselves personally, some have other people who receive them. Councilman Greenly was just telling me about the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the vet posts, where some have some issues in parts of the posts and various members' names. So it appears that for the OPA to send out some notices that some got, some churches did not get, and other nonprofits, we really weren't ready for this aspect of this issue. Councilman Bill Green initially introduced it, and obviously, he's not here. We have our own issues on the School Reform Commission. We deal with that. So...
Mr. Bill Green's okay, though, right, Councilwoman?
Oh, my goodness. So again, we thank everyone for coming, and we ask all those members from the various churches, as soon as we have a public hearing date, we had to introduce the bill here today. We will let them know, and it has to be public knowledge at any rate, in three papers, and we hope that they will come back so that we may have a full discussion and really pass the legislation we introduced today to do away with this reporting. Thank you very much. reporting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank, Councilwoman. This being the people's counsel, I'm sure we'll collaborate and come with a reasonable solution to this very troubling issue.
Thank you.
And thank you all. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasco.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to introduce two new staff members for the ninth Councilmatic District. Mrs. Gwen Redman, who is here with us.
Please stand up.
She's a strong community worker and leader in the fiftieth ward, and we welcome her. And we...
Welcome.
Give her a round of applause.
Welcome.
And she's a great cook.
All right.
And Mr. Frank Iannuzzi, who's a young man who just finished law school with honors. And he's here sharing the spot which Derek Green held for many years before leaving to run for council at large.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Frank was actually a member of our fellows program.
Yes.
Starting in city council. Yeah. Awesome.
During a discussion about one issue, I stopped and thought, wait a minute. Don't you want to come work for me?
Yeah. All right.
So he's a great, great person. And I happen to know his parents, and I didn't know I knew his parents.
Great training ground. And I suspect the councilman's going to talk about a new hire. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also acknowledge in the spirit of my colleague Councilman Marion Tasco, a new addition to my staff, Mr. Jasmine Sadat. She's a graduate of University of Spelman College, as well as...
Woo-hoo!
University of Berkeley, California. Jasmine, can you stand? She's the liaison for planning and community engagement. Want to welcome her aboard.
All right. Welcome, Jasmine. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. Mr. President, I neglected... I would ask that you recognize and ask to stand members of the Black Clergy and other churches and other representatives who are here.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to ask for members of the Black Clergy and other churches, please stand. Thank you.
There's a question.
Thank you so much. Given the challenges that we face every council session, it is always good to have the clergy in the house. And please say a prayer for us. Thank you so much. There being no additional speeches. Councilwoman Keona Sanchez?
Thank you. Councilman Johnson keeps stealing the microphone from me. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add to today's discussion some important points. I definitely want to thank Councilman Greenly, who's worked with all of us on some of these charter changes. As was stated, the charter is an important document and really should reflect the spirit in which we operate this government between the executive, the judicial, and the legislative branch of government. I want to congratulate Councilwoman Blackwell on her commission for universal pre-K. It goes without saying the value and the importance of that issue, and all of us will continue to support her on that.
Thank you.
I also want to congratulate Councilwoman Brown and Tasco on the women's commission. I think one of the most important things we can do as a legislative branch and as government is to ensure, as Councilwoman Brown often says, if women are not on the table, they're on the menu. And I think that reestablishing the women's commission is an important value to not only us in the legislative branch, but also to the executive